So I, I think I just want to start by saying, you know, this is probably one of the hardest topics that, that has been put in front of me. And this is only my second term on the school committee. But this has been something that keeps me up at nights that I grapple with. And, you know, I, at the end of the day, I just feel like there's just no great solution. There's no perfect answer. The only perfect answer is we have a vaccine and we can all take our masks off and, and start, you know, diving back into what we once knew as, as normal in a newer version. With that said, you know, as I go out every day, I don my mask, I go into the supermarkets, I adhere to all the social distancing that we're asked to adhere to. You know, I went away with my sisters the other day at a Massachusetts hotel. And, you know, all the precautions were in place. And, you know, it, it gave me pause for thought to just watch adults, you know, losing their sense of kind of keeping up with the precautions and flipping back into a bit of a normal behavior pattern. And so, you know, I, with all of that, I, I just, as I think about putting all the kids back in the schools for any degree of time in the next foreseeable future, you know, until we're, we're certain about what, what we can do about vaccines and all of that. It, it just seems, I, I'm struggling a lot with that. You know, I just was reading something the other day. Dr. Fauci had given an interview to the American Federation of Teachers. And I'm just going to read one of the quotes that he had said during the interview, which really kind of stuck with me. He was talking about kind of what we can expect, you know, as we contemplate reopening schools. And he had just referenced that, you know, since we pulled the kids out into a remote learning setting relatively early in the pandemic, the quote begins, unfortunately, though this may sound a little scary and harsh, you're going to be part of the experiment of a learning curve of what we need to know. And, you know, as a school committee member, as a parent, as a member of this community, I don't want my kids to be an experiment. And, you know, at the end of the day, there's a thousand great reasons to get these kids back in those seats. And I will say from personal experience that, you know, I, I have four children. One of them did fairly well, you know, in the spring with remote learning. The others not so well, you know? It wasn't a, we're winning every day situation. So, and I hear from, from people that go back and forth and, you know, there's just, there's so many reasons. It's, it's a huge inconvenience. It's, it's obviously not the most optimal learning situation. But though, at the end of the day, you know, before I, I close my eyes after just raking over all the data, all the information, the one reason that I am left with for trying to stick with remote for a little bit is that if the death of one...
Ms. Freddie, can you hear us? I think you've paused. Can people hear me all right?
Yes, here you are, but she did freeze. Her screen froze.
Let's give her one second to see if her connection reestablishes.
Madam President, my camera is kind of glitchy and I don't want it to freeze my computer. But if there is a moment I could ask Dr. Trocheck a question, I would like to.
Sure, why don't we do that? It looks like Ms. Freddie is going to try to rejoin us. Go ahead, Ms. Quayle.
Um, so Dr. Trocheck, I just had a question about the buses. With the buses for the elementary school children, how will the drop off, how will the drop offs work with alphabetical if there are like three children in one building that go to the same bus stop that might be on two different ends of the alphabetical spectrum there?
No, Ms. Trocheck, you're, or Dr. Trocheck, you're on mute.
Sorry. Thank you. Actually, that's a great question, Ms. Quayle. Actually, we have more to talk about about buses, much more to talk about about buses. Our feasibility study on buses really indicates that, and, and we did present that to the task force. L will be coming forward with more information to the committee. I just didn't think we had enough time tonight to add anymore. But the bus, the capacity that we have to transport students is A) going to depend on the number of students that we, that register and the hybrid model or the model that's adopted. However, at current, we're planning on separating the cohorts A to K and M to Z or something in, in that range. I don't, I think that the buses would run every day for each, each group, whether they were in cohort A or cohort B. We did take a look at addressing, could we maybe create cohorts by bus routes or something like that? But the challenge becomes when you're splitting up different students from different families at the different levels and the high school schedule, which that would not, you know, it wouldn't work very well. There were a number of challenges with that. That's something that we did look at. So I think our current plan, although we're always open to ideas and feedback because we have not really figured everything out, would be that we would just, the students that were A to K last name would go in cohort one and M to Z would go, L to Z would go another. Dr. Flaherty, did you want to weigh in on that one?
I, I think maybe what Ms. Quayle was asking though is if, if you have children in the same family with different last names. And we are talking about that. We don't have the exact answer, but we would work on flexibility that would release, you know, we, maybe we take the oldest student or the youngest student and all of the students, all of the children from the same family leave at the same time. You would not have to make different runs to pick up different children.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. So thanks for clarifying that for me. Was that what you were asking, Ms. Quayle?
Yes, that's basically.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. I, I think Ms. Freddie is going to try to continue her thoughts, perhaps without the video, which was taking less bandwidth. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. I cut out. But I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty much done with my statements, I, you know, and my thoughts and concerns. And this isn't, I, as I was saying, I, I don't say this lightly. I don't think that there's any easy answer to what our, our possible solutions are. But just, you know, at the end of the day, I, I'm, the risk for me of losing someone, a student or teacher, is just far too great to go into any model that includes kids in the seats at schools for any amount of time, you know, until we're all walking around without our masks, you know, with that, a little less caution, a little less restriction and all of that good stuff. And I do want to stress too, that with that said, I recognize that there is a, a need, a great need for a large population in Beverly for additional support, you know, for lunch services, free reduced lunch. And, and I hope that, you know, if we do lean in the direction of, of going remote until it is safe for our student population and our teachers, that we would put some efforts into resources, you know, academic support for those students that, that might need it. You know, again, I guess that's leaning into a little bit of a hybrid, but with a, a smaller population, just to serve the, the students that would need that additional support. You know, and again, I don't know, I don't have a, a perfect solution right now. I know we're still in the, the thought process now. But do you have anything to add, Dr. Trocheck, about, you know, possible resources that, that would become available if we did do it all remote? Is that something that is feasible to, to add?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think, you know, if we were in a full remote, I, I certainly know that the administrators that I've been talking to would have some significant concerns for a high number of their students in their buildings. And so we would have to sort of put our heads together and, and see what we could do. I'm not really, I, I think the, the challenge is that the, the number of metrics that you would measure to determine who would come in and at what level. And, and somewhat, it sounds like a reverse hybrid in a way, you know, thinking about that. And I'm not really sure, you know, that would take a lot more investigating and, and, you know, making sure that we were serving well the students that needed it in, in a manner that was allowed. So, and that's certainly something for us to think more about. I will say in terms of, you know, supports for the hybrid model and for others, for some families, we're working really hard, again, as I said, with some of our childcare providers to make sure that we have opportunities for kids in that way. But if we were in complete remote, I'm not really sure. I'd have to really do some investigating as to the possibilities of opening up. We would have to still open up for our identified populations from that last slide that I showed. I guess the question would be, how would we, how would we create the rubric or, or identify who those families were? And how would we do that? So those would be things we would have to work on.
I wanted to just offer some comments, but I wasn't sure if there was other members that wanted to speak first.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Trocheck. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Without the video cue, I couldn't tell if you were done. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So just from my perspective, since we're only really allowed to discuss this in open sessions, I just wanted to share a few of my thoughts, especially after our site visits yesterday. And my new appreciation for the difference between our remote learning, which would be pivoting from, you know, our Beverly schools and the Remote Learning Academy. I think having the flexibility to offer Remote Learning Academy to anyone who felt that they needed to opt out, no doctor's note necessary. It's, it's just an option that exists for everyone, seems to align with my understanding of what our community is looking for in terms of having an in-person option, whether it's a hybrid or a five day or modified five day. I think the survey results were pretty impactful at the beginning of our presentation, showing that there seems to be a clear indication that parents are looking for some sort of in-person opportunity for our students. We're kind of in the, in a crux right now where we have a pandemic, but we also have a lot of other justice issues going on and a lot of work to be done in terms of meeting our high needs, students' needs, as well as meeting the social emotional needs of all of our students. You know, we have a lot at risk. Health and safety is obviously of utmost concern, but I think my comfort level after visiting the buildings, after hearing about the protocols, especially with the younger students being in the cohorts and having the contact tracing, having our Department of Health resources, knowing what we know. I think that, you know, Beverly in particular, and I, I give kudos to the mayor for being very clear and direct with our families and our, our neighbors about the importance of wearing masks and about really respecting the power that is behind this virus. I, I think that we're a pretty compliant group for the most part. And I've seen some things at Rises Beach as well, kayaking by. But I, I think that we're respectful of masking. And I think that the structure of our schools is going to actually provide some additional protection for some of our younger students, both in being able to have supervision. Right now, what I'm seeing is a lot of kids whose parents still have to work. If it's nice outside, they're, they're sending their kids out. And it's, it's an unsupervised and, and unair-conditioned. So, you know, yeah, there's some masks that maybe need to be worn a little bit better, but at least they're outdoors and there's some, some sense of social distancing. But I, I really do think that we need to look at what our community is asking for, especially with our younger students, especially with our at-risk students, either academically or socially emotionally, and certainly with our high needs students, which we obviously would serve. And I, I think we really do need to, in earnest, given the data today, at this point in time, what is July 30th, I think that I have a comfort level that we can return to school in some model and understand and respect any family that chooses the Remote Learning Academy. I don't think that there's any, anything wrong with that, especially kids that enjoyed remote learning. You know, I, I have a student myself who really thrived during the emergency closure because online meant basically school could go all day. The projects could sit out on the dining room table. And the project-based learning that our school districts are doing is, is really something that I think, you know, all of our students, if we go to a hybrid and some days they're at home, they can take pictures of their work from home and, and bring it back on their iPads to show and get feedback from teachers. I think that, you know, there's, there's definitely some really good, strong planning that has gone into our submission to DESI tomorrow. And I'm looking forward to having some conversations about it when we make our decision next week. I see Ms. Visnick's hand now.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to thank everybody who helped put on the quote-unquote three-hour tour. Older people will get that TV reference. It was eye-opening. It was good to spend some time in the buses and, and in the various classrooms and the different configurations. So you can look at a picture all you want, but actually being in there was very helpful for me. I do have a very quick question for Dr. Trocheck. You had maybe mentioned in an email that you'd be trying to do like a reel interview, right? You did have some very nice pictures in today's slides, but having a video and, and like almost a walking tour for people to be able to experience, I think would be incredibly helpful. I thought you mentioned doing that. So is that planned? And if so, how soon do you think that would be available to anybody who was not able to join our fun field trip yesterday?
So not planned yet. It was a great idea, but I was so caught up in my tour myself. I didn't take any video. That was my plan. I was going to video it while I was there. So that, that's certainly something that I can check with Mrs. Oliver at each of the levels, Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Oliver, and Mrs. Taylor, to kind of put that together and get it out. And we'd be able to kind of share that. I, I think any kind of information that we can share with families at any, in any way is going to be really helpful for them to understand and all, as well as for anybody, for all of you that are sitting in your seats to make the decision about what you, about how you're going to vote on the sixth. So I will absolutely work on that. I don't, I can't give you an exact timeline, but we'll definitely work on it. Thanks.
Madam President, may I continue?
You may.
Thank you. My next question is around the HVAC systems at each of our levels and whether conversations have been had, if we can get some amount of information. And I'm guessing that it would be different at each of the levels, elementary, just by sheer fact of the age of those buildings versus our brand-new middle school versus our high school. And the sense of the air quality, regardless of how far apart our students are. One of the things that I've spent a, a good amount of time doing is reading the Harvard School of Public Health has a very comprehensive, if you want to return to school, here's the different things you have to think about. And one of the things is the air quality in the room. And then they have kind of like a prioritized list of, well, if you have a good HVAC system, you can put a HEPA filter, excuse me, put a HEPA filter in there and, and you're good to go. And, and they think that that, that gives them very, very high level of confidence that your air quality in that room, in that building would be sufficient to return to that building. And then again, there's just a, well, if you don't have, if you can't take a HEPA filter, then you could do this other thing. And if you can't do that, then you could open your windows and put fans in your windows, one fan pulling air in, one fan throwing air out and having a air purifier kind of in a triangular situation. But again, our, we don't have all that equipment and our elementary schools don't really have windows that would facilitate having fans help make the airflow happen. So in, in all your discussions, there was not any information about air quality in the classroom. So I was wondering if, if that information exists and if we could have it, perhaps not this evening, but next week, if, if that could be part of the presentations before we make our vote.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, I didn't mention it, but part of the task force work has been looking at the feasibility at the facilities and operations. Early on, we had some conversations about the HVAC. I know that I've been working with my Collins to make sure that we're getting that information. He, not only just from him, but from, we have, working with an outside consultant to kind of make sure they're doing a check and balance of what we have and what we don't. So our systems, while, while different at each level, all are all, and I don't, again, I am, so I'm not a doctor and I'm not an engineer and I struggle in those two areas. But, but they're, they're all, all of that information and data is digital right now. We know how many air flows in each room. I mean, you know, because of the way that we have it set up. So the, and the maintenance schedule around filters and all of that, I can certainly have that information. We're working on it already anyway. We're working on a report for that to have it ready. And that was part of the feasibility study that we were planning on doing on our own. And also something that I know teachers are interested in and I, I'm assuming the committee's interested in as well, so.
Right. I guess my, my big concern about that is it was, I believe, Dr. Hershey's last year here, when we sent children home early one day at the beginning of the school year due to the heat in the classroom. And then we had no school the following day because the classrooms were so incredibly hot and, and there was no airflow in those elementary school buildings. So that is a, that is a memory in my, in my rapidly graying head that I think will play a big part in my ability to make a decision. Because if, regardless of how close we place the desks and how many families say they want to bring their children back, there were a decent number of teachers on your pie chart that said, I'm either concerned or maybe I'm just nervous and the air quality in that room will, will absolutely play an important, that, that fact I think is very important. And so I, I think we need to go there, go there.
Thanks. I will share one thing that I have not, I, I probably said at the task force as well. There's just the multi, the amount of information to share with people is immense. But we are absolutely going to have an indicator based on heat index. So much like we would call a snow day, in particular, if students are wearing masks in classrooms, we know how important that is. So taking a look at if the heat index got, rose to a particular level, then we would just have remote learning that day. I mean, you know, much like we would do a snow day. So one of the things, because we know there's come some concerns, it's change, it's different to be out in the hot with a mask on. It's hard to be out and, out when it's hot or in, in a room when it's hot with, without a mask on, but with the mask, it certainly changes that. So that is one of the areas that as superintendent's group, we've been talking about what are different districts doing and how are we going to look to measure that? And, and so that piece is on. And again, I, as I said, we are compiling the information regarding the air systems in the districts.
Thank you. Madam President, I have one more question, but I'm happy you yield the floor.
I'm going to just ask, do any other members have a statement? Mr. Malady? And then we'll return to you, Ms. Visnick.
Thank you.
So I just want to say, you know, thanks isn't, wish there was a better word than thank you for the mountain of work that has been going on by our, our central office over the summer. There's, there's a lot to digest and a lot to, to go forward. I also want to say thank you to Kelly. I think, you know, putting yourself out there like that, sharing your concerns, sharing your passion, not to be too touchy feely, but like showing some vulnerability is, is very important to see. And, you know, I appreciate, you know, Rachel hearing your comments. And I did not have a chance to go to the school, but a part of me just feels there's an element of hypocrisy to vote, to send kids back to school while we're having remote meetings. And that doesn't mean if we make the vote in person next week, that's going to shift my mind. This sucks. This sucks so much for so many people. And I'm not being a very eloquent person right now, but I, I am not going to be the mayor from Jaws and say, my kids are in that school too. You know, what's more traumatizing for a child? Being the one who tests positive and they have to shut the school down? Or being the child who has their kid get sick? I'm just going to go with the golden rule here. You know, I'm not going to vote for something that I don't think would be safe for my kids or my family or for myself, for that matter. I think, you know, the, the least bad option is involving the, the kids that we can identify that would benefit the most from being in a classroom, having face-to-face instruction. It's a global pandemic. The virus does not care. And it's up to us to vote with our conscience whether or not we can disagree with our neighbors and our constituents about what they think is best. I thought it was interesting that we still had 40% who didn't vote. Those 40% who did not vote, was it because of internet accessibility? Was it because they were too busy to take the time to fill it out themselves? Or are we seeing, you know, families casting more than one vote? So I think we put in all this hard work and I, I probably sound like an ungrateful ass and that is not my intention, but it's just very hard for me in a remote meeting to say or to lean towards going back. So I, I, I was reminded by you, Ms. Abel, that this is a working meeting and this is the only forum that we have to, you know, show our hands in which way that we're leaning to. So, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. I, like everyone else, I also want to thank everyone who made our tour possible. I think it's so important for those who don't spend most of their waking hours and lives in, in public schools to see, you know, what it really looks like. So I'm sure that was a very, very eye-opening and we really appreciate how quickly you were able to pull that together, Dr. Trocheck. So we appreciate that. So like, so much goes through my mind as a teacher, as a parent and as a school committee member, but like really most importantly, it, what, it's what, it's about being a human being and just really about, like, again, at the end of the day, how, like, whose lives are, everybody's lives are important here. So, and it's just really hard to make kids and teachers part of that big experiment. And, you know, I'm just not sure we're, I'm not sure we're ready. We can't go to the movies. Our, our children in Beverly aren't playing Little League. We can't go to Maine. As of yesterday, we're, we can't go to the Topsfield Fair. All those things, we can't do those things. And, you know, the, it gives you pause to just really think about, you know, should we send people back to schools at this point? Children, adults, every, everybody who would be in those buildings. So I think our responsibility is to reopen the doors at some point, but only when it's safe for everybody who enters them. So that's just, that's what I've been thinking about daily. So, and it kills me to really think about not going back to school in September because my kids go back to school in September. I've been going back to school in September for 23 years. But I just think we have, we have a lot to think about before we vote next week. And I think everybody's, everybody makes, has made such eloquent and great statements. And I just wanted to let you know, I respect all of your voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. I'm just looking to see if we have any other hands. Ms. Visnick, you had another question. Go ahead.
Madam President, I am doing my darndest to, although I, I respect what John said about this being a working meeting, I am reserving my, my real statement, I think, till next week in hopes that over the next week, I can just do as much more additional reading and research as I can. I will also wish to appreciate and recognize the opinions that are being expressed. And I think that, I read a great piece the other day about everybody has their own choice and they, they, we need to be respectful of those choices. And, you know, we're going to, we're going to head into the next section of the meeting, which is, you know, controversial in its own way. And some people believe that, that there are problems in our society and some people don't. And this particular issue of reopening the schools is...
the schools is been very politicized, and that's unfortunate. And so I think that because it's been politicized, it's more, it's just a little bit more difficult to make the decision and worry, like somebody said, can I make that decision and not feel like I am going to be hated on by my neighbors or by somebody who says I'm in a very different boat than you're in, and you don't understand? So I, a big tip of the cap to everybody who's doing their homework and who's got their ears open and, you know, there's, heavy is the head that wears the crown. My last question for the superintendent is, perhaps, I save the worst for last, is around the teacher data that you showed us and the fact that there was an MTA meeting last night. And I believe I understand what the outcome of that MTA meeting was. And not that I think that the teachers should, quote-unquote, let us off the hook. It is our job. We are leaders. We are elected to lead, and I will be prepared to make a vote next week. However, I do want to ask if, as a district, the preferred plans that are being brought forward are taking into account what you believe happened at that MTA meeting last night? That's my question.
So I, so one of the things in Beverly that we are very fortunate, and Julia is, I know, on the line here, and I think she will attest to it as well, that she and I have been in constant communication. We work together very well. We have a great respect for each other, and I think that's really important. I did speak with her this morning. I understand that, you know, there are a lot of different ideas and thoughts. I think that some of the questions that have been raised are all important to be considered. I guess what I want to say to all of you and to everyone, everyone has stated a lot of thoughts and ideas and opinions about, about what, and we know that perspective plays into it. You have different, everybody has a different experience in different roles. Whatever you all decide in Beverly, whatever the committee decides, we will do well. And, you know, I guess you need to know that. Like, if you decide you liked the hybrid models and you believe that we can make them, return kids to school safely and that we can, you know, adhere to all of the requirements and safety measures and safely return kids, we will do it well, and we will provide the best hybrid model that we can. If you choose that you think our students need to return remotely, we will do it well, and we will provide the best remote learning experience for kids in Beverly. That's what we do. We have, we have great teachers in our district. We have great administrators in our district. And so we will all come together in the end and do what we need to do to the best of our ability. In terms of, you know, the union and the work that they're doing, they're doing their due diligence, right? They're thinking and researching and doing all the things that you're doing, and they may have a different opinion. I have said, and I will say, I, you know, I've worked really hard with the group of administrators who really believe that they can put together a safe return for our students in the models that we've proposed. We certainly gave a couple of different options of what those are, but in the end, if it's remote, we're going to pivot and we're going to put that plan together, and we're going to make that the best plan that we can do. So, you know, that's our job, and that's what we do. And so, I mean, I don't know if I directly answered your question, but just sort of, I know, it was a good try, though.
I, again, I don't want to insult my neighbors. I don't want to insult you. I don't want to insult any administrator. But with all due respect, you guys are educators for a living, and I'm trying like heck to defer to that, but you're not the teacher. And so I specifically asked the question about the MTA and about the BTA, because that's who has to get in that classroom. And so it's both the fact that every single person on this committee right now has a child, and we would all be putting our children back in the classroom. And, but I have, I have the option, God bless you for giving it to me, I have the option to keep my child home. But I'm not convinced that I can demand that some teacher go, go into the building. Especially with the previous question that I asked you about the air quality, I don't feel that I have the right to demand somebody go to work environment. We haven't even talked about hazard pay. I can't make somebody go into a dangerous environment.
Right. So those are all the options.
And so I said I'm not going to vote until next week.
Yeah.
There you go. My cards on the table.
So those are the options that you are being asked away, and that is the role that you're being asked to fill, right? So my job was to kind of say, here are the three models. Here is the optimal decisions that we can do. What can we look at as a, you know, and we put together a team of 100 people who just sort of put their heads together and said, all right, what would be best if we're in person? What would be best if we're hybrid? What will be best if we're remote? And so hopefully, that's what I've presented to you tonight, what those three options are for all of you to be kind of informed, to be able to make that decision. And there are so many, so many areas and so many factors that need to be considered. So, you know, I'm here with the presentation of the information, and hopefully I gave you enough information to inform what you need, and you've asked for some more, and we'll provide as much more information as we can for you in the next few days.
I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Okay. Well, thank you again, Dr. Trocheck, for the presentation, for entertaining us. Other questions?